...........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Please remain standing for a minute of silent prayer and meditation. Honorable Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, on the part of the majority, I move that we elect the following members to certain committees. Representative Eileen R. Ermita Buahin as Member Number One of the Committee on Accounts. Representative Romeo M. Akop as Member Number One of the Committee on Public Order and Safety. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, on behalf of the majority, the aforementioned members are elected to those particular committees. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker.
Mr. Speaker, I move that the suspension session is suspended.
You do it according to the rules. We don't, we don't, the house doesn't, kaitna majority ini elect. We don't elect.
[Laughter]
[Laughter]
Boss. Congratulations, ma'am. Ma'am, na-elek ka na po ha? Anga-ano, sa account. Ha? Bakit? Si? Inelek ni ba? Agreed, dear? Oras longas, oras longas, uh, it was a, inan. Bakit may na-got si? Eh, pa ni gabilan? Depetet? Twenty-one plus fifteen. Twenty-one plus sixteen. Pero... Abao. Boss. Boss. Tignan natin, tignan muna natin. Masayin ang importante, bro, boss. Ayaw, basta i-inay importante, bro.
Isa sa dalawang, di ako may.
Basta, i-inay importante, bro, di ba? [Laughter] Totoo yun.
First day kami dito. Hindi kami, hindi kami manifesto ngayon. After me, sir. Di ko lang alam kung sino yun.
Mo was honest with you. Si... Go na ba, maire? Maire go na ba? Si ne-depikis kong beso boss? Sinson, sinson Fred Castro, yun. Sinson Fred Castro, yun. Sinson, sinson Alfredo. Sinson Fred Castro, yun. Alves, Alves. Pero sinson, Alfredo. Abalo manasag. Yung buh. Alam mo na nila, president na tama. Eh, pagka-tapos tadi, president na tadi. Sabe niya, sabi niya, yun pinapakalamin niya sa, ah, North Mind. Sa atsaka ni Hado. Ayaw. Elected. Elected. Of the first, of the district, yun. Sai, lape la. History. Elected. Speaker. Seven and six. Seven and six. Captain, sir. Sasa. Salud. I need salud. Baby. Paki-lash po yun. Yung tawag, ano tawag? Boss. Yung kamey, mag-umabot. Sige, sige. Dito ang tila, pala. They're there. Joseph's play, bata, Joseph's play, bata. Let me, let me fight. It's time, man. [Laughter] Manifesto. [Laughter] 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 [Laughter]
Session is resumed. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we call the roll.
The Secretary General is directed to call the roll of members. Roll call of members, honorable representatives. Abad. Abaya. Abayon. Abilyanosa. Abu. Abueg. Acharon. Akop. Acosta. Acosta Alba. Adjong. Adbingkula. Agarau. Agabao. Aglipay Bilyar. Akbar. Albano. Alkala. Alejano. Almario. Almonte. Alonte. Alvarez Franz. Alvarez Mercedes. Alvarez Pantalyon. Amante. Amatong. Andaya. Angara Castillo. Antonino. Antonio. Aragones. Arbizon. Arcillas. Arenas. Atchenza. Aumentado. Bagau. Bagaching. Bagilat. Banal. Barbers. Barsaga. Batawil. Batukabe. Bautista Bandigan. Belaro. Belmonte Villishano. Belmonte Jose Christopher. Belmonte Ricardo. Benitez. Bernos. Bertis. Biazon. Biliones. Biron. Bulilia. Bondok. Bordado. Bravo Anthony. Bravo Meribida. Brosas. Bulut Piktang. Kagas. Calderon. Calixtrobianno. Caminero. Campos. Kanama. Kari. Casilau. Castelo. Castro Franz. Casa Fredinil. Katamco. Cayetano. Celeste. Seravica. Ciriles. Chavez. Chipeco. Co. Kuwanko. Juliantes. Cortez. Cortuna. Posalan. Crisologo. Kuwa. Quaresma. Cueba. Dalipe. Dalob. Dasa. Desus. De Venesia. De Vera. De Pensor. Del Mar. Del Rosario. Del Osamontalia. Nimaporo Abdullah. Nimaporo Muhammad Khalid. Duabit. Durano. Di. Elago. Enverga. Erise. Erigel. Hermita Buain. Escudero. Estrella. Espina. Espino. Yusebio. Evardone. Fariñas. Hernando. Ferrer, Ferrer Juliet Marie. Ferrer Luis. Ferriol Pascual. Florrendo. Flores. Fortún. Fortuno. Fentebelia. Garbin. García. García Gwendolin. García Jose Enrique. García Albano. Garin, Gary Richard. Gary Sharon. Gasataya. Gachilian. Heron. Goana Cristina. Go Mark. Gomez. Gonzaga. González Alexandria. González Aurelio. González Fernando. Goriseta. Gulias. Hernández. Herrera Di. Hofer. Alusos. Javier. Co. Konghun. Labad Labad. Lakson. Lakman. Lanete. Laugan. Lasatin. Lejon. Li. Limkey Jong. Lubrigat. López Benur. López Carlo. López Manuel. Leola. Macapalaroyo. Maceda. Madrona. Malapitan. Manalo. Mangawang. Mangodadatos Huarto. Mangodadatos Sajid. Marcoleta. Marcos. Mariño. Marquez. Martínez. Matugas. Millana. Mendín. Mercado. Miresol. Montoro. Nava. Nieto. Noel. Nogralles Jerico. Nogralles Carlo. Nolasco. Núñez Malañaon. Wominal. Ocampo. Olivares. Ong Edwin. Ong Henry. Ortega Pablo. Ortega Vini. Pacquiao. Palma. Pancho. Padwano. Panganiban. Panotes. Papandayan. Pichai. Pimentel. Pineda. Plaza. Primicia Segabás. Kimbo. Radaza. Ramírez Sato. Relámpagos. Ramos. Revilla. Rova Puno. Robes. Rocamora. Rodr- Rodríguez Isidro. Rodríguez Maximo. Roman. Romero. Romualdes. Romualdo. Roque Harry. Roque Roelio. Sakdalan. Segarberia. Sahali. Salceda. Salimbangan. Salo. Salon. Sambar. Sandoval. Santos Recto. Sarmiento César. Sarmiento Edgar. Savillano. Semah. Xiao. Silverio. Sing- Singson. Swansing, Swansing Estrelita. Swansing Horacio. Suárez. Si Alvarado. Tambunting. Tan Angelina. Tan Milagrosa. Tan Sherni. Tejada. Teves. Chanco. Ting. Tiño. Tolentino. Trenyas. Tugna. Tupas. Turabinataman. Ti. Umalí. Ungab. Uniko. Unavia. Uy Juliet. Uy Rolando. Vargas. Vargas Alfonso. Villarde. Vilasco Catera. Vilasco Lord Allen. Veloso. Vergara. Villapuerte. Villanueva. Villar. Villarasa Suárez. Villarica. Villarin. Villago. Yap Arthur. Yap Mileseho. Yap Victor. Yu. Samora Marcamin. Samora Ronaldo. Sarate. Subiri. Mr. Speaker, the roll call shows that 242 members responded to the call. With 242 members responding to the call, the chair declares the presence of a quorum. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we defer approval of jour- of the journal.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, motion is approved. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we take up reference of business and for that purpose, uh, direct the secretary general to read the titles of the bills on first reading, resolutions and messages for referral to the appropriate committee. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Secretary General is directed to read the title of bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports.
Reference of business, bills on first reading, House Bill number is 501, 518, 699901. Institutionalizing the Pantabit Pamilya Filipino Program, subs. Yap, Castro, Macapalaroy and Fortuno.
To the Committee on Poverty alleviation.
House Bill 502, increasing the honorarium and Christmas bonus of barangay officials, subs. Yap.
To the Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 503, strengthening the barangay true support of barangay officials, subs. Yap.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 504, establishing a free basic medicine assistance program, subs. Yap.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 505, amending section 3 and 6 of Republic Act 10630, subs. Yap.
Committee on Justice.
House Bill 506, penalizing age discrimination, subs. Andaya.
Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 507, defining penalizing distracted driving, subs. Andaya.
Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 508, expanding the scope of acts constit- constituting, constituting sexual harassment, subs. Andaya.
Revision of Laws.
House Bill 509 and 580, increasing the maternity leave period, subs. Andaya and Cayetano.
Women and gender equality.
House Bill 510, providing free employment privileges in indigence, subs. Andaya.
Labor and employment.
House Bill 511, restructuring the transfer taxes of barbers.
Ways and Means.
House Bill 512, establishing the Philippine National Identification System, subs. Barbers.
Population and Family Relations.
House Bill 513, imposing the death penalty, subs. Barbers.
Justice.
House Bill 514, creating the third district of Sarigao del Sur, Northeds, Subs. Barbers.
Local Government.
House Bill 515, providing free Wi-Fi internet access, Subs. Herrera Di.
Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 516, promoting positive and nonviolent discipline of children, Subs. Herrera Di.
Welfare of Children.
House Bill 517, rationalizing the economic regulation of water utilities, Subs. Herrera Di.
Government Enterprises and Privatization and the Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Bill 519, amending Republic Act 7166, Subs. Castro, Pedenil.
Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 520, identifying other persons criminally liable, Subs. Castro.
Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 521, providing for the disqualification of any person holding a public point of office, Subs. Castro.
Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 522, strengthening the political party system, Subs. Castro.
Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Bill 523 and 696, establishing the Filipino Identification System, Subs. Garbin, Batokabe and Macapalaroy.
Population and Family Relations.
House Bill 524, providing for mandatory field health coverage, Subs. Garbin, Batokabe and Co.
Social Services.
House Bill 525, providing for mangakartop agriculture and fishery development workers, Subs. Batokabe, Garbin and Co.
Agriculture and Food and Aquaculture and Fisheries Resources.
House Bill 526, amending certain provisions of the Charter of the NIA, Subs. Garbin, Batokabe and Co.
Agriculture and Food.
House Bill 527, establishing the National Coastal Greenback Program, Subs. Batokabe, Garbin and Co.
Natural Resources.
House Bill 528, amending Batas Pampasap bilang 68, Subs. Batokabe, Garbin and Co.
Trade and Industry.
House Bill 529, reducing the senior citizen age from 60 to 56, Subs. Batokabe, Garbin and Co.
Population and Family Relations.
House Bill 530, providing for rural employment, Subs. Batokabe, Garbin and Co.
Social Services.
House Bill 531, regulating the packaging used for sale distribution and advertisement of products with di-sodium content, Representatives Batokabe, Garbin and Co.
Health.
House Bill 532, regulating the packaging used for sale distribution and advertisement of electronic smoking devices, Batokabe, Garbin and Co.
Trade and Industry.
House Bill 533, establishing a national center for missing children, Subs. Gonzaga.
Welfare of Children.
House Bill 534, providing additional benefits and privileges to senior citizens, Subs. Gonzaga.
Population and Family Relations.
House Bill 535, establishing a state-of-the-art and highly scientific sports com- complex, Subs. Gonzaga.
Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 536, requiring parents to plant two trees, Subs. Olivares.
Forestation.
House Bill 537, mandating mobile phone network, Subs. Olivares.
Information and Communications Technology.
House Bill 538, strengthening the Philippine Comprehensive Policy on HIV and AIDS, Subs. Yap.
Health.
House Bill 539, institutionalizing pre-hospital emergency medical care systems, Subs. Yap.
Health.
House Bill 540, providing for comprehensive hazards and digestive waste management, Subs. Yap.
Ecology.
House Bill 541, requiring healthcare facilities to provide priceless health care services, Subs. Yap.
Health.
House Bill 542, strengthening the regulation of health facilities, Subs. Yap.
Health.
House Bill 540, creating the Department of Officers' Workers, Subs. Arenas.
Governmentary Organization and Overseas Workers Affairs.
House Bill 544, creating the Philippine Sports Academies, Subs. Sambar.
Governmentary Organization and Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 545, establishing sports complex, Subs. Sambar.
Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 546, requiring higher education institutions to report participation and program support expenditures in all college athletic programs, Subs. Sambar.
Higher and Technical Education.
Uh, Mr. Speaker, excuse me, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, excuse me.
Honorable, honorable, uh, Sarmiento.
Mr. Speaker. Parliamentary inquiry, please.
Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker. Parliamentary inquiry, please.
Majority floor leader.
Um, Mr. Speaker, we are in the process of, um, reading our bills, resolutions and messages, um, and this shall, under our rules, they should not be interrupted. I was just, uh, I, I just want to ask because...
Mr. Speaker, um, move to suspend, Mr. Speaker. Session is suspended. Session is resumed. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we resume the reference of business and direct the secretary general to continue, um, reading the titles of the bills on first reading, resolutions and messages for referral to the appropriate committee. So move, Mr. Speaker.
We thank the honorable Sarmiento for giving way to administrative matters. Secretary General is directed to continue reading title of bills and resolutions on first reading for referral to the appropriate committee.
House Bill 547, strengthening the office of the Solicitor General, Subs. Escudero.
Justice.
House Bill 548, imposing the completion of the requirements of the... House Bill 548, imposing the completion of the requirements of continuing professional education programs, Escudero.
Civil service and professional regulation.
House Bill Numbers 549, 679 to 682, 708, 722 to 724, 910, 944, 946, converting certain roads, Sub Delmar, Eregel and several others.
Public works and highways.
House Bill 550, declaring September 21th, FBS Special Unworking Holidays, related measures necessary in proper to efficiently address the traffic crisis in Metro Manila, Sub MacPacarroyo and Fernando.
Metro Manila Development.
House Bill 555, instituting genuine agrarian reforms, Casila, Sarati several others.
Agrarian reform.
House Bill 556, prohibiting the practice of labor contractualizations, Sub Casila, Sarati several others.
Labor and employment.
House Bill 557, creating the genuine small coconut farmers' funds, Sub Casila, Sarati several others.
Agriculture and food.
House Bill 558, abolishing delegational service fees, Sub Casila, Sarati several others.
Agriculture and food.
House Bill 559, providing for the repeal of Republic Act 7279, Sub Casila, Sarati several others.
Housing and urban development.
House Bill 560, implementing the right of the people to information on the matters of public concerns, Sub Castillo.
Committee on Public Information.
House Bill 561, amending full public disclosure by governor, city mayors, municipal mayors, Sub Castillo.
Local Government.
House Bill 562, amending Section 24 of the National Internal Revenue Code, Sub Castillo.
Ways and Means.
House Bill 560, authorizing the Dole to ban and forbid the practice of private companies, Sub Castillo.
Labor and employment.
House Bill 564, creating the Metropolitan Development Authority, Sub Castillo.
Government Enterprises Privatization.
House Bill 565, organizing the Cooperative Development Authority, Sub Canama and Bravo.
Cooperatives Development.
House Bill 566, amending the representation of cooperatives, Sub Canama and Bravo.
Banks and financial intermediaries.
House Bill 567, amending Republic Act 8178, Sub Canama and Bravo.
Government Enterprises and privatization.
House Bill 568, enhancing participatory governance, Sub Canama and Bravo.
People's participation.
House Bill 569, providing for people's direct participation in funding charitable institutions, Sub Canama and Bravo.
People's participation.
House Bill 570, amending certain provisions of Republic Act 723, 7323, Sub Angara Castillo.
Labor and employment.
House Bill 571, institutionalizing occupational health and safety of workers, Sub Angara Castillo.
Labor and employment.
House Bill 572, amending higher education institutions, technical vocational institutions to ensure safety and security of academic communities, Sub Angara Castillo.
Higher and technical education.
House Bill 573, institutionalizing the nationwide implementation of Job Start Philippines programs, Sub Angara Castillo.
Labor and employment.
House Bill 574, instituting the mangakartop Filipino seafarers, Sub Angara Castillo.
Overseas workers affairs.
House Bill 575, providing a free and culture-sensitive system, Sub Pangani Ban.
Indigenous cultural communities and indigenous peoples.
House Bill 576, prohibiting racial, ethnic and religious discrimination, Sub Pangani Ban.
Human rights.
House Bill 577, creating the Department of Indigenous Peoples, Sub Pangani Ban.
Government organization and indigenous cultural communities and indigenous peoples.
House Bill 578, providing national high school scholarship programs, Sub Pangani Ban.
Higher and technical education.
House Bill 5... House Bill 579, amending the PSA to include ethnic origins, Sub Pangani Ban.
Population and family relations.
House Bill 581, strengthening the Philippine comprehensive policy on HIV and AIDS, Sub Caetano.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 582, promoting sustainable and alternative modes of transportation, Sub Caetano.
Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 583, providing for the mangakartop student athletes, Sub Caetano.
Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 584, promulgating a national mental health policies, Sub Caetano.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 585, Bank Protection Act of 2030, Sub Batawil.
Banks and financial intermediaries.
House Bill 586, providing for more responsive civil registration system, Sub Batawil.
Population and family relations.
House Bill 587, amending Republic Act 4200, Sub Batawil.
Revision of Laws.
House Bill 588, strengthening PDAAs, Sub Batawil.
Dangerous drugs.
House Bill 589, strengthening the regulation and manufacture, sale, distribution and use of firecrackers, Sub Batawil.
Public order and safety.
House Bill 590, requiring registration of all users of prepaid SIM cards, Sub Belarde.
Information and communications technology.
House Bill 591, providing for mandatory field health coverage, Sub Belarde.
Social Services.
House Bill 592, amending the installation of CCTV, Sub Belarde.
Public order and safety.
House Bill 593, amending the installation of monitoring devices, Belarde.
Public order and safety.
House Bill 594, requiring all government agencies, Sub Belarde.
Local Government.
House Bill 595, establishing the Sarigao del Sur Special Economic Mining Zone, Sub Pichai.
Economic affairs and trade and industry.
House Bill 596, establishing the Philippine Emergency and Disaster Management Authority, Sub Pichai.
National defense and security.
House Bill 597, providing for the establishment of Philippine citizenship identification system, Sub Pichai.
Population and family relations.
House Bill 598, amending Sections 284 and 390 Republic Act 7166, Sub Suarez.
Local Government.
House Bill 599, amending the construction of a Quezon vehicle expressway, Sub Suarez.
Public works and highways.
House Bill 600, amending DOJ, Sub Suarez.
Justice.
House Bill 601, creating the National Gaming Commission, Sub Suarez.
Government reorganization, games and amusements.
House Bill 602, amending Section 220, Title 2, Title, Chapter 2, Title 8 of Republic Act 8424, Sub Suarez.
Ways and Means.
House Bill 603, prohibiting the establishment of political dynasties, Sub Erise.
Suffrage and electoral reforms.
House Bill 604, postponing the date of the barangay elections, Sub Erise.
Suffrage and electoral reforms.
House Bill 605, providing for the establishment of senior high schools, Sub Erise.
Basic education and culture.
House Bill 606, upgrading the services and facilities of La Union Medical Centers, Sub Eregel.
Health.
House Bill 607, converting National Center for Geriatric Health, Sub Eregel.
Health.
House Bill 608, providing for revised human organ donations, Sub Eregel.
Health.
House Bill 609, establishing the Philippine Blood Disease and Transfusion Centers, Sub Eregel.
Health.
House Bill 610, establishing the Agod, the Mortis Protected Landscape, Sub Eregel.
Natural Resources.
House Bill 611, converting the municipality of Santo Tomas, Sub Culiantes.
Local Government.
House Bill 612, reclassifying parcel of public domains, Sub Roman.
Natural Resources.
House Bill 613, designating one seat in the Board of Directors, Sub Roman.
Basis conversion.
House Bill 614, declaring Pilis Falls, Sub Roman.
Tourism.
House Bill 615, declaring barangay talas, Sub Roman.
Tourism.
House Bill 616, providing for free use of computers, Sub Roman.
Information and communications technology.
House Bill 617, apportioning the loan district, Sub Gunea Panlusod seats in the City of Bacol, Sub Padwano.
Local Government.
House Bill 618, granting fixed honorarium additional incentives to, Sub Padwano.
Local Government.
House Bill 619, providing all barangay officials, Sub Padwano.
Local Government.
House Bill 620, providing incentives to barangaitans, Sub Padwano.
Local Government.
House Bill 621, requiring all national, regional, provincial government hospitals, Sub Padwano.
Health.
House Bill 622, declaring March 20th, FBS Special Unworking Holidays, Sub Gonzalez.
Revision of Laws.
House Bill 623, declaring the stretch of beaches, Sub Gonzalez.
Tourism.
House Bill 624, establishing the Legao City National Technical Vocational High School, Sub Gonzalez.
Basic education and culture.
House Bill 625, declaring the municipality of Binyar, Sub Gonzalez.
Tourism.
House Bill 626, creating Caravau Center, Sub Gonzalez.
Agriculture and food.
House Bill 627, amending the construction of Quezon vehicle expressway, Sub Lanete.
Public works and highways.
House Bill 628, providing for increase in salary grade of government positions, Sub Lanete.
Appropriations.
House Bill 629, providing for an increase in the salary grade of government nurses, Sub Lanete.
Appropriations.
House Bill 630, creating the Philippine Center for Autisms, Sub Lanete.
Health.
House Bill 631, amending the establishment of humor warriors, Sub Lanete.
Health.
House Bill 632, amending Presidential C186, Sub Romaldo.
Legislative franchises.
House Bill 633, regulating the use of utility poles, Sub Romaldo.
Information and communications technology.
House Bill 634, repealing Article 891 of Reserva Troncal of Republic Act 386, Sub Romaldo.
Revision of Laws.
House Bill 655, amending Article 2 of Republic Act 386, Sub Romaldo.
Revision of Laws.
House Bill 636, amending Republic Act 9023, Sub Romaldo.
Revision of Laws.
House Bill 67, converting the Camarines North State College, Unico.
Higher and technical education.
House Bill 638, converting the municipality of Labos, Sub Unico.
Local Government.
House Bill 639, providing for the establishment of district hospitals, Unico.
Health.
House Bill 640, establishing the Camarines North First District Engineering Office, Sub Unico.
Public works and highways.
House Bill 641, requiring mandatory teaching of human rights, Abayon.
Basic education and culture.
House Bill 642, providing for restructuring of arirres, Abayon.
Energy.
House Bill 643, expanding the special programs, Abayon.
Labor and employment.
House Bill 644, institutionalizing the nation, countrywide implementation of Job Start Philippines, Abayon.
Labor and employment.
House Bill 645, promoting the creation of green collar jobs, Abayon. House Bill 646 and 670, establishing regulatory frameworks, TNEAP.
Energy and trade and industry.
House Bill 647, providing for additional benefits and privileges to senior citizens, Kagas.
Population and family relations.
House Bill 648, establishing, creating the Bakungan National High Schools, Kagas.
Basic education and culture.
House Bill 649, prohibiting the use of modified exhaust pipes, Pancho.
Transportation.
House Bill 650, requiring all pedestrian overpasses, Pancho.
Public works and highways.
House Bill 651, withdrawing certain tax exemptions, Uwaminal.
Energy.
House Bill 652, creating additional arts and crafts in Osami cities, Uwaminal.
Justice.
House Bill 653, granting retirement benefits, Uwaminal.
Local Government.
House Bill 654, granting monthly honorariums, Uwaminal.
Local Government.
House Bill 655, converting the Northwest and Mindanao State College, Uwaminal.
Higher and technical education.
House Bill 656, granting additional benefits to PWDs, Trenyas.
Social Services.
House Bill 657, setting the 2016 barangay elections, Trenyas.
Suffrage and electoral reforms.
House Bill 658, establishing mangakartop students, Trenyas.
Basic education and culture, higher and technical education.
House Bill 659, penalizing the imposition of no permit no example, Elago.
Basic education and culture, higher and technical education.
House Bill 660, providing for pre-public wireless internet accessibility, Elago.
Information and communications technology.
House Bill 661, ensuring the welfare and protection of BPO workers, Elago.
Labor and employment.
House Bill 662, providing for the protection of workers, Roque Harry.
Labor and employment.
House Bill 663, strengthening the Philippine Comprehensive Policy on HIV and AIDS, Roque Harry.
Health.
House Bill 664, providing for mangakartop workers, Roque Harry.
Labor and employment.
House Bill 665, amending Sections 79, 1881 of BP 881, Roque.
Suffrage and electoral reforms.
House Bill 666, establishing mangakartop for Philippine internet freedoms, Roque.
Information and communications technology.
House Bill 667, establishing barangay integrated development approach, Yap.
Rural development.
House Bill 668, rationalizing the income requirements, Yap.
Local Government.
House Bill 669, establishing Philippine high school for sports, Yap.
Basic education and culture.
House Bill 670, establishing regulatory framework for the safe operation of LPG, Yap.
Energy.
House Bill 671, providing for penalties or fines against airing public telecom entities, Yap.
Information and communications technology.
House Bill 672, establishing multi-purpose fishery breeding farms, Gonzalez.
Aquaculture and fisheries resources.
House Bill 670, providing assistance program for OFWs, Aglipay Bilyar.
Overseas workers affairs.
House Bill 674, expediting the process of repatriation, Aglipay Bilyar.
Overseas workers affairs.
House Bill 675, expanding prohibited acts, Aglipay Bilyar.
Labor and employment.
House Bill 676, amending Section 2 of Republic Act 8187, Bilyar.
Labor and employment, civil service and professional regulation.
House Bill 6677, institutionalizing occupational health and safety, Aglipay Bilyar.
Labor and employment.
House Bill 678, fixing the limits of forest lands, Eregel.
Natural resources.
House Bill 680, amending Republic Act 493, Delmar.
National defense and security, public order and safety.
House Bill 684, amending Republic Act 553, Delmar.
Public information.
House Bill 685, providing for the venue of the criminal civil actions, Delmar.
Public information.
House Bill 686, amending Republic Act 7621, Delmar.
Government enterprises and privatization.
House Bill 687, amending certain provisions of Republic Acts 6958, Delmar.
Government enterprises and privatization.
House Bill 688, penalizing all acts of torture, Romaldo.
Human rights.
House Bill 689, prohibiting penalizing possession of offensive weapons, Romaldo.
Public order and safety.
House Bill 690, strengthening the office of the Ombudsman, Romaldo.
Appropriations.
House Bill 691, simplifying the procedure in the disposition of public agricultural lands, Romaldo.
Natural resources.
House Bill 692, establishing the public asset management corporations, Romaldo.
Government enterprises and privatization.
House Bill 693, withdrawing the IRA of MMDAs, Romaldo.
Metro Manila Development.
House Bill 694, converting the municipality of Lubao, Sub MacPacarroyo.
Local Government.
House Bill 695, creating the National Revenue Authority, Sub MacPacarroyo.
Government enterprises, privatization, committee on ways and means.
House Bill 697, strengthening the political parties, Representative MacPacarroyo.
Suffrage and electoral reforms.
House Bill 698, encouraging corporate social responsibilities, Sub MacPacarroyo.
Trade and industry.
House Bill 700, converting the Anduyan Asin Roads, Eregel.
Public works and highways.
House Bill Numbers 701 and 702, increasing bed capacity, Eregel.
Health.
House Bill 700, condoning the unpaid balance of the loans, Eregel.
Public works and highways.
House Bill 704, converting the Cabaritan Sur Elementary Schools, Eregel.
Basic education and culture.
House Bill 705, declaring December 21st, FBS Special Unworking Holiday, Eregel.
Revision of Laws.
House Bill 706, institutionalizing the grant of student fare discounts, Angara Castillo.
Transportation.
House Bill 707, declaring every 26th of June, every year's Philippine France Friendship Day, Angara Castillo.
Foreign affairs.
House Bill 709, defining the cost termination of employment, Angara Castillo.
Labor and employment.
House Bill 710, enhancing the regulation and employment, Angara Castillo.
Labor and employment.
House Bill 711, rationalizing government interventions, Angara Castillo.
Labor and employment.
House Bill 712, specifying the requirements of legitimate contracting subcontractors, Angara Castillo.
Labor and employment.
House Bill 713, providing for benefits to military dependents, Angara Castillo.
National defense and security.
House Bill 714, protecting the rights of internally displaced persons, Belmonte Jose Cristo.
Human rights.
House Bill 715, establishing the Talipapan National High School, Belmonte.
Basic education and culture.
House Bill 716, declaring the month of October, FBS Best Cancer Awareness Month, Vargas.
Health.
House Bill 717, prescribing school bus safety standards, Vargas.
Transportation.
House Bill 718, strengthening Republic Act 8187, Vargas.
Labor and employment and civil service and professional regulation.
House Bill 719847, establishing institutionalizing long-term care for senior citizens, Vargas and Bilyarica.
Population and family relations.
House Bill 720, improving emergency medical service, Vargas.
Health.
House Bill 721, establishing the Balita National High School, Dalog.
Basic education and culture.
House Bill 725, prohibiting the collection of fees, Dalog.
Transportation.
House Bill 726, fostering culture of voluntary compliance, Nograles.
Labor and employment.
House Bill 727, including the sale of electricity by power generation companies, Nograles.
Ways and Means.
House Bill 728, regulating the practice of plumbing, Nograles.
Civil service and professional regulation.
House Bill 729, rationalizing the taxes imposed on non-life insurance policy, Nograles.
Ways and Means.
House Bill 730, strengthening the internal affairs service of the PNP, Nograles.
Public order and safety.
House Bill 731, amending Republic Act 7653, Nograles.
Banks and financial intermediaries.
House Bill 72, protecting the rights of internally displaced persons, Nograles.
Human rights.
House Bill 733, creating the vehicle region anti-illegal fishing authorities, Escudero.
Natural resources.
House Bill 734, granting monthly pension to government retirees, Escudero.
Government enterprises and privatization.
House Bill 735, including national artists as a member of the NCCAs, Escudero.
Basic education and culture.
House Bill 736, reverting to national government the discharge of basic health services, Escudero.
Health.
House Bill 737, requiring all broadcast medias, Escudero.
Public information.
House Bill 738, strengthening the special program for employment of students, Aglipay Bilyar.
Labor and employment.
House Bill 739, requiring employees to provide daycare facilities, Bilyar.
Welfare of children.
House Bill 740, providing for benefits of families, Aglipay Bilyar.
Social services.
House Bill 741, establishing special education centers, Aglipay Bilyar.
Basic education and culture.
House Bill 742, strengthening the private security industries, Aglipay Bilyar.
Public order and safety.
House Bill 740, providing for qualified early voting for senior citizens, Aglipay Bilyar.
Suffrage and electoral reforms.
House Bill 744, prohibiting the collection of any amount of money, Aglipay Bilyar.
Overseas workers affairs.
House Bill 745, establishing a single traffic ticketing system, Aglipay Bilyar.
Transportation.
House Bill 746, amending LGU, Aglipay Bilyar.
Local Government.
House Bill 747, amending Republic Act 4136, Aglipay Bilyar.
Transportation.
House Bill 748, instituting the mangakartop daycare workers, Aglipay Bilyar.
Welfare of children.
House Bill 749, establishing a policy in support of infant... House Bill 749 establishing a policy in support of infant feeding mothers of Aglipay Biliar.
Health.
House Bill 750 establishing a national preventive mechanisms of Aglipay Biliar.
Human rights.
House Bill 751 mandating on tax all prerequisites of Aglipay Biliar.
Trade and industry.
House Bill 752 mandating the tax-free duty pre-interpretation of books of Aglipay Biliar.
Ways and means.
House Bill 753 expanding the definition of a book of Aglipay Biliar.
Basic education and culture.
House Bill 754 considering rice or corn hoardings of Aglipay Biliar.
Revision of laws.
House Bill 755 providing for the mandatory installation of CCTV of Aglipay Biliar.
Transportation.
House Bill 756 establishing the passenger protection office of Aglipay Biliar.
Transportation.
House Bill 757 prescribing school bus safety standards of Aglipay Biliar.
Transportation.
House Bill 758 providing for the regulation of activities of taxi drivers of Aglipay Biliar.
Transportation.
House Bill 759 defining the crime of sexual infidelities of Aglipay Biliar. House Bill 760 establishing maternal and child healthcare programs of Aglipay Biliar.
Health.
House Bill 761 guaranteeing access to birth attendance of Aglipay Biliar.
Health.
House Bill 762 providing national public education programs of Aglipay Biliar.
Health.
House Bill 763 promoting the full realization of constitutional provisions of Aglipay Biliar.
Health.
House Bill 764 establishing an infant mortality programs of Aglipay Biliar.
Health.
House Bill 765 establishing a maternal and infant home visiting programs of Aglipay Biliar.
Health.
House Bill 766 creating the bank of the card of barangay institution scholars of Aglipay Biliar.
Health.
House Bill 767 creating system of food distribution of Aglipay Biliar.
Health.
House Bill 768 providing for the banner aerial space of Aglipay Biliar.
Ecology.
House Bill 769 amending section 46 of Republic Act 8749 of Aglipay Biliar.
Ecology.
House Bill 770 providing for steep and fines of Aglipay Biliar.
Ecology.
House Bill 771 enhancing the Philippine environment impact assessment systems of Aglipay Biliar.
Ecology.
House Bill 772 requiring the planting of trees of Aglipay Biliar.
Forestation.
House Bill 773 providing of ban on dumping of sewage sludge of Aglipay Biliar.
Ecology.
House Bill 774 increasing the compensation of unjustly detained of Aglipay Biliar.
Revision of laws.
House Bill 775 institutionalizing criminal investigation systems of Aglipay Biliar.
Justice.
House Bill 776 providing for the protection of whistle blowers of Aglipay Biliar.
Justice.
House Bill 777 prohibiting invasion of privacy of Aglipay Biliar.
Justice.
House Bill 778 creating the public-private partnership authorities of Salceda.
Public works and highways.
House Bill 779 granting all required, all qualified farmers of Abayan.
Energy.
House Bill 780 providing system of assistance of Abayan.
Overseas workers affairs.
House Bill 781 requiring all government private hospitals of Abayan.
Health.
House Bill 782 granting additional compensation of Abayan.
Appropriations.
House Bill 783 increasing the salary grade of public school teachers of Gulyas.
Appropriations.
House Bill 784 providing incentives to all barangay officials of Gulyas.
Local government.
House Bill 785 converting the Talisa IDC hospitals of Gulyas.
Health.
House Bill 786 integrating the Talisa City College of Gulyas.
Higher and technical education.
House Bill 787 providing for the Cebu light rail transport of Gulyas.
Transportation.
House Bill 788 providing for the construction of fish ports of Gulyas.
Aquaculture and fisheries resources.
House Bill 789 declaring the city of Carcas of Gulyas.
Basic education and culture.
House Bill 790 to 798 establishing national high schools of Ungabsi and Cialberado.
Basic education and culture.
House Bill 799 making the position of municipal agriculturists mandatory of Batokabe Garbininco.
Local government.
House Bill 800 expanding the jurisdiction of Court of Appeals of Batokabe Garbininco.
Justice.
House Bill 801 granting discount privileges of Batokabe Garbininco.
Basic education and culture.
House Bill 802 abolishing the national coordinating monitoring boards of Batokabe Garbininco.
Government reorganization, population and family relations.
House Bill 803 defining penalizing crime of bullying of Batokabe Garbininco.
Justice.
House Bill 804 implementing the effective enforcement of environmental laws of Batokabe Garbininco.
Justice.
House Bill 805 mandating all schools and universities of Batokabe Garbininco.
National defense and security.
House Bill 806 instituting public administration and government scholarship programs of Batokabe Garbininco.
Higher and technical education.
House Bill 807 providing for allowances of Batokabe Garbininco.
National defense and security.
House Bill 808 amending section 7 Republic Act 8981 of Batokabe Garbininco.
Civil service and professional regulation.
House Bill 809 providing for free legal assistance of Batokabe Garbininco.
Population and family relations.
House Bill 810 establishing a culture and gender sensitivity programs of Batokabe Garbininco.
Basic education and culture.
House Bill 811 abolishing regular mandatory contribution of Batokabe Garbininco.
Games and amusement.
House Bill 812 requiring all government and non-government officers of Batokabe Garbininco.
Energy.
House Bill 820 establishing and providing pre-college education of Batokabe Garbininco.
Higher and technical education.
House Bill 814 prohibiting the selling and retailing of used cooking oils of Batokabe Garbininco.
Health.
House Bill 815 requiring government and non-government officers of Batokabe Garbininco.
Civil service and professional regulation, labor and employment.
House Bill 816 creating the national sanitation coordinating council of Batokabe Garbininco.
Health.
House Bill 817 ensuring the continued financial capacity of Batokabe Garbininco.
Banks and financial intermediaries.
House Bill 818 requiring the disclosure of all charges of Batokabe Garbininco.
Energy, information and communications technology.
House Bill 819 threatening rationalizing professionalizing practice of sales of Batokabe Garbininco.
Civil service, professional regulation.
House Bill 821 creating Department of Fisheries and Aquatic Resources of Batokabe Garbininco.
Government reorganization, aquaculture and fisheries resources.
House Bill 822 establishing the Department of Officers Philippine Workers of YAP Arturo.
Government reorganization, overseas workers affairs.
House Bill 823 institutionalizing the conditional cash subsidy programs of YAP.
Poverty alleviation.
House Bill 824 regulating the imposition of fees of Marcoleta.
Trade and industry.
House Bill 825 defining political dynasty of Marcoleta.
Suffrage and electoral reforms.
House Bill 826 regulating parking facilities of Andaya.
Trade and industry.
House Bill 827 defining penalizing the crime of cyberbullying of Andaya.
Information and communications technology.
House Bill 828 providing all barangay officials of Andaya.
Local government.
House Bill 829 giving monthly honorarium of Andaya.
Local government.
House Bill 830 separating converting the Community Source Institute of Fisheries and Marine Sciences of Andaya.
Higher and technical education.
House Bill 831 standardizing the operations of Andaya.
Higher and technical education.
House Bill 822 car park regulations of Samora requirement.
Trade and industry.
House Bill 833 naming the Montevista-Catil National Highways of Samora.
Public works and highways.
House Bill 834 converting the Canid-Ked-Lak provincial roads of Samora.
Public works and highways.
House Bill 835 declaring March 8 of the year's special on working holidays of Samora.
Revision of laws.
House Bill 836 declaring August 1 of the year's special on working holidays of Samora.
Revision of laws.
House Bill 837 naming the Montevista-Mati National Highways of Samora.
Revision of laws.
House Bill 838 nationalizing the Kasoon National High Schools of Samora.
Basic education and culture.
House Bill 839 mandatory creating, mandatorily creating the position of Municipal General Services Office of Samora.
Local government.
House Bill 840 establishing the Legislative Dean of Samora.
Justice.
House Bill 841 establishing the DDI Provincial Office of Samora.
Trade and industry.
House Bill 842 declaring the portion of the Mount Tagob Campalili ranges of Samora.
Natural resources.
House Bill 840 protecting the rights of airline passengers of Villarica.
Transportation.
House Bill 844 promoting advocating mental health of Villarica.
Health.
House Bill 845 providing safety measures of Villarica.
Public works and highways.
House Bill 846 establishing an online network of Villarica.
Information and communications technology.
House Bill 848 instituting the bank of the card of daycare workers of Villarica.
Welfare of children.
House Bill 849 providing for environmental education of Villarica.
Basic education and culture.
House Bill 850 improving the opportunities of Villarica.
Science and technology.
House Bill 851 prioritizing the appointment of honor graduates of Villarica.
Civil service and professional regulation.
House Bill 852 providing assistance to fresh graduates of Villarica.
Labor and employment.
House Bill 853 prohibiting appropriation of Villarica.
Justice.
House Bill 854 reverting fish ponds of Villarica.
Natural resources.
House Bill 855 providing for integrated national bamboo and rattan development programs of Villarica.
Agriculture and food.
House Bill 856 granting women the right to no work conditions of Villarica.
Labor and employment.
House Bill 857 penalizing dumping of sewage sludge of Villarica.
Ecology.
House Bill 858 designating the joint operation and management committees of Villarica.
Public works and highways.
House Bill 859 requiring driver's education of Villarica.
Transportation.
House Bill 860 adopting the higher prescribed penalties of YAP.
Dangerous drugs.
House Bill 861 rationalizing regulating tuition and other school fees of YAP.
Higher and technical education.
House Bill 862 providing for indemnification of public officers of YAP.
Civil service and professional regulation.
House Bill 863 defining hate crimes of YAP.
Justice.
House Bill 864 preventing unreasonable increases in petroleum prices of YAP.
Energy.
House Bill 865 combating abuse of YAP.
Population and family relations.
House Bill 866 establishing an elderly care of YAP.
Population and family relations.
House Bill 867 creating barangay care of YAP.
Local government.
House Bill 868 reclassifying a schedule run of YAP.
Natural resources.
House Bill 869 establishing the Terlak National Science High School of YAP.
Education and culture.
House Bill 870 providing for the development of Espina.
Transportation.
House Bill 871 establishing provincial office of Espina.
Government enterprises and privatization.
House Bill 872 declaring the province of Beliran as mining pezone of Espina.
Natural resources.
House Bill 870 changing the name of Naval State University of Espina.
Higher and technical education.
House Bill 874 establishing a 200-bed capacity provincial hospitals of Espina.
Health.
House Bill 875888 strengthening the national road in local health and vision progress of Espina and Tan.
Health.
House Bill 876 instituting reforms in real property valuation of Mento.
Government reorganization.
House Bill 877 amending BP 868 of Sarmiento.
Trade and industry.
House Bill 878 granting additional benefits to solo parents of Lopez.
Revision of laws.
House Bill 879 providing penalties to parents acting irresponsibly of Lopez.
Population and family relations.
House Bill 880 declaring November 25 to 31 and January 1 special on working holidays of Lopez.
Revision of laws.
House Bill 881 directing public hospitals of Lopez.
Health.
House Bill 882 regulating the donation and transportation of human organs of Lopez.
Health.
House Bill 883 requiring owners of business establishments of Lopez.
Trade and industry.
House Bill 884 amending Republic Act 9211 of Tan.
Health.
House Bill 885 increasing the minimum age of Tan.
Trade and industry.
House Bill 886 defining the term indigent of Tan.
Population and family relations.
House Bill 887 reducing poverty of Tan.
Poverty alleviation.
House Bill 889 prohibiting the access of minors of Tan.
Trade and industry.
House Bill 890 declaring November 28 of the year's foundation day of municipality of Santa Margarita of Sarmiento.
Revision of laws.
House Bill 891 declaring October 16 of the year's Ascalbaing City Charter Day of Sarmiento.
Revision of laws.
House Bill 892 providing for the establishment improvements healthcare of Tan.
Health.
House Bill 893 threatening the regulation of health facilities of Tan.
Health.
House Bill 894 prohibiting the roaming, loitering or sleeping of unchaperated children of Tan.
Welfare of children.
House Bill 895 threatening the prohibition of Tan.
Labor and employment.
House Bill 896 banning the use of firecrackers of Tan.
Public order and safety.
House Bill 897 providing assistance to indigent cancer patients of Tan.
Health.
House Bill 898 establishing a medical scholarship service program of Tan.
Health.
House Bill 899 protecting Filipino mothers, Villarasa Suarez.
Health.
House Bill 900 setting the barangay, setting the barangay election of Fortun.
Suffrage and electoral reforms.
House Bill 902 increasing the authorized expense of Fortuno.
Suffrage and electoral reforms.
House Bill 903 threatening the right of citizens of Fortuno.
Public information.
House Bill 904 institutionalizing Philippine bamboo industry development process of Sabigliano.
Agriculture and food.
House Bill 905 establishing a special economic zone of Sabigliano.
Economic affairs, trade and industry.
House Bill 906 regulating tuition and other fees of Castro Fedine.
Basic education and culture, higher and technical education.
House Bill 907 protecting conserving utilizing developing and sustaining sustainably managed forest resource of Castro.
Natural resources.
House Bill 908 threatening the witness protection security and benefit progress of Castro.
Justice.
House Bill 909 prohibiting premature electoral campaigns of Castro.
Suffrage and electoral reforms.
House Bill 911 defining prohibiting the establishment political dynasty of Roque.
Suffrage and electoral reforms.
House Bill 912 prohibiting the establishment political dynasty of Roque.
Suffrage and electoral reforms.
House Bill 913 providing for journalist protections of Roque.
Public information.
House Bill 914 requiring any persons of Roque.
Suffrage and electoral reforms.
House Bill 915 the kill switch laws of Roque.
Information and communications technology.
House Bill 916 the anti-EDO acts of Roque.
Labor and employment.
House Bill 917925 threatening the intergence committees of Roque and Abaya.
Health.
House Bill 918 establishing a health promotion fund of Roque.
Health.
House Bill 919 creating road development authority of Abaya.
Government enterprises, privatization, public works and highways.
House Bill 920 declaring September 7 of every year of Abaya.
Revision of laws.
House Bill 921 amending section 4 of Republic Act 9184 of Abaya.
Appropriations.
House Bill 922 reinstating the mandatory ROTC of Abaya.
Higher and technical education.
House Bill 923 institutionalizing the income classification promises of Abaya.
Local government.
House Bill 924 declaring October 20 of every year of Abaya.
Revision of laws.
House Bill 926 amending Republic Act 8292 of Abaya.
Higher and technical education.
House Bill 927 converting the L2 licensing centers of Abaya.
Transportation.
House Bill 928 establishing productivity improvement progress of Abaya.
Labor and employment.
House Bill 929 providing for the establishment of the no calls and no tax regulations, legislation of Abaya.
Information, communications technology.
House Bill 930 instilling fiscal discipline of Abaya.
Appropriations.
House Bill 931 requiring the registration of all users of prepaid SIM cards of Abaya.
Information and communications technology.
House Bill 922 declaring any presidential nominee of Abaya.
Revision of laws.
House Bill 933 providing protection benefits to persons of Abaya.
Justice.
House Bill 944 providing for pre-hospitalization of Chanko.
Health.
House Bill 955 amending certain provisions of Republic Act 9344 of Chanko.
Revision of laws.
House Bill 967 amending section 55 of Republic Act 9387 of Chanko.
Local government.
House Bill 937 dividing barangay North Bay of Chanko.
Local government.
House Bill 938 dividing barangay Tango of Chanko.
Local government.
House Bill 939 dividing barangay Tansas of Chanko.
Local government.
House Bill 940 converting the San Rafael National High School of Chanko.
Basic education and culture.
House Bill 941 requiring all telecommunications companies of Chanko.
Information and communications technology.
House Bill 942, removing the allowable systems law.
Energy.
House Bill 943, amending Sections 2 and 3 of Republic Act 8794.
Public works and highways.
House Bill 945, declaring January 16 of the year.
Revision of laws.
House Bill 947, providing for exemption from income tax.
Ways and means.
House Bill 948, providing for the establishment of substance abuse rehabilitation centers.
Dangerous drugs.
House Bill 949, defining decumination on the basis of sexual orientation.
Women and gender equality.
House Bill 950, granting the city of Manila.
Ways and means.
House Bill 951, creating the Bureau of Technology Education.
Governmentary organization, basic education and culture.
House Bill 952, requiring the subdivision of condominium owners.
Housing and urban development.
House Bill Number 953, providing mangakarta for daycare workers.
Welfare of children.
House Bill 954, exempting PWDs.
Social services.
House Bill 955, establishing comprehensive training programs.
Basic education and culture.
House Bill Numbers 956 to 962, separating and converting schools.
Education and culture.
House Bill 963, establishing Handlum Weaving Training Centers.
Higher and technical education.
House Bill 964, establishing a floricultural garden.
Agriculture and food.
House Bill 965, establishing community orchards.
Agriculture and food.
House Bill 966, establishing a specialized national high school.
Basic education and culture.
House Bill 967, promoting the production of aromatic rice.
Agriculture and food.
House Bill 968, declaring the first day of February.
Muslim affairs.
House Bill 969, providing for tax incentives.
Ways and means.
House Bill 970, requiring the use of energy-efficient lighting.
Energy.
House Bill 971, authorizing the city of municipal city regis.
Justice.
House Bill 972, amending Republic Act 8972.
Revision of laws.
House Bill 970, strengthening the right of citizens.
Public information.
House Bill 974, declaring August 2.
Revision of laws.
House Bill Numbers 975, 976, 978, 980, converting various roads.
Public works and highways.
House Bill 977, instituting national fraud insurance program.
Banks and financial intermediaries.
House Bill 981, declaring the city of Butuan.
Tourism.
House Bill 982, instituting the mangakarta of daycare workers.
Welfare of children.
House Bill 983, regulating the production, importation, sales.
Ecology.
House Bill 984, providing for mangakarta for barangay tarats.
Local government.
House Bill 985, providing for the benefits.
Health.
House Bill 986. Declaring the barangay.
Basic education and culture.
House Bill 987, providing for mangakarta of workers.
Labor and employment.
House Bill 988, granting the sec-- the authorities.
Banks and financial intermediaries.
House Bill 989, regulating the practice of employers.
Labor and employment.
House Bill 990, separating the city of Calabas.
Local government.
House Bill 991, creating three additional arts and branches.
Justice.
House Bill 992, converting the Tinalmud High School.
Basic education and culture.
House Bill 990, establishing a national technical vocational high school.
Basic education and culture.
House Bill 994, declaring March 31.
Revision of laws.
House Bill 995, clarifying the right of married women.
Revision of laws.
House Bill 996, providing for eligibility requirements.
Population and family relations.
House Bill 997, providing additional exemptions.
Ways and means.
House Bill 998, amending Section 286.
Local government.
House Bill 999, amending Section 21 of 8749.
Ecology.
House Bill 1000, excluding overtime pay from the compensation taxable income.
Ways and means.
Solutions, House Solution 62, urging the NLRC.
Overseas workers affairs.
House Solution 63, direct appropriate committees.
Rules.
House Solution 64, direct committee on banks.
Rules.
House Solution 65, urging the PNP.
Rules.
House Solution 66, urging the National Historical Commission.
To the committee on rules.
House Solution 67, urging the committee on transportation.
Rules.
House Solution 68, direct committee on natural resources.
Committee on rules.
House Solution 69, direct committee on trading industries.
To the committee on rules.
House Solution 70, direct committees on human rights and welfare of children.
Committee on rules.
House Solution 71, direct special committee on vehicle recovery.
To the committee on rules.
House Solution 72, direct committees on natural resources.
To the committee on rules.
House Solution 73, direct committees on basic education.
To the committee on rules.
House Solution 74, direct committees on good government.
To the committee on rules.
House Solution 75, direct committees on basic education.
To the committee on rules.
Messages from President, message dated June 14, 2016.
To the committee on rules.
Message dated July 20, 2016.
To the committee on rules.
Message dated July 20, 2016.
To the committee on rules. Honorable Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, on the part of the majority, I move that we elect the following members to certain committees. Representative Eileen R. Ermita Buhain as member number one of the Committee on Accounts. Representative Romeo M. Acop as member number one of the Committee on Public Order and Safety. So move, Mr. Speaker.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the aforementioned members of the majority are elected to the aforementioned committees. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we acknowledge some guests from the office of the Sangguniang Panglunsod.
Please proceed.
They are guests of the Honorable Speaker Pantalyon Alvarez and representatives from the provinces of Davao, namely Charito Santos, Maria Reyes, Joan Benesario, Benicario, Stefa Aksalan, Marcelina P. Desin, Josephine Alcoino Senior.
Esteemed guests, please rise. Welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Floor Leader.
May we also acknowledge the guests of the representatives from the Makabayan Block. They are from Manila Bayan ng Mindanao, 2016, Southern Mindanao, KMP, SMR, Pasaka, SMR, Lumad Confederation of Lumad Organizations, Sambuanga Peninsula, SGS Subanen, Sokserjen Kaluhamin, Northern Mindanao, Columbay, Karaga, Kasalo.
Esteemed guests, please rise. Thank you for your visit to the House of Representatives. Majority Floor Leader.
Mr. Speaker, may we also acknowledge the guest of the honorable Jose Antonio R. C. Alvarado from the First District of Bulakan, Mr. Didis Domingo.
Esteemed guests, please rise. Thank you for your visit. Majority Floor Leader.
Move to suspend, Mr. Speaker.
Session is suspended. Session is resumed. Majority Floor Leader.
Um, Mr. Speaker. I rise on a question of personnel and collective privileges with respect to reactions to the President’s sauna. My constituents and other concerned parties have been asking why no member of the House has stood up to react to the sauna. I would like to discharge that obligation, Mr. Speaker.
The esteemed gentleman from the First District of Albay, the Honorable Elsa Lagman, has 10 minutes. Please proceed.
The State of the Nation Address, or Sona, is a concrete articulation of a president’s assessment of the nation’s status as well as his policy statements and proposed legislation. This is particularly true with respect to the forced sauna of our new president. It is also a constitutional duty. It is for these reasons that the sauna is documented in a well-prepared speech, read by the president ideally devoid of motherhood statements and with a minimum of ad-libs and populist soundbites. It is unfortunate that President Duterte meandered from his prepared speech into spontaneous and repetitive references on varied subjects and details, losing necessary focus. In the process, the president must have missed reading important points in his prepared speech. Consequently, this reaction to the sauna will include subjects on which the president has previously pontificated but not expressed by him in his deliberate sauna. The counter-sona does not only adhere to tradition, Mr. Speaker. It is also a manifestation of the political opposition’s common alternative advocacy and differing views, as well as the positions of individual minority members. But before demuring from some of President Duterte’s policy statements and directions, let me start by underscoring the minorities’ qualified agreement with the following presidential pronouncements, either in the sauna or previously announced. Number one, outlawing of labor contractualization or what is commonly known as Endo, or end of contract, to avoid or evade a worker’s assuming permanent status. In order to evade a worker’s assuming permanent status, the guarantee of security of tenure for public sector personnel must be extended with equal efficacy to workers in private employment. Number two, uncompromising campaign to obliterate the drug menace, arrest and prosecute drug lords and pusers, dismantle drug syndicates, and rehabilitate drug users and dependents. But all must be within the parameters of due process and rule of law. Extra judicial killings, as experienced in other countries, will not solve the drug problem. Number three, prioritizing the construction and development of railway systems in the country like the Manila-Nueva Biscaya, Manila-Sorsogon, Manila-Batangas lines, and the whole of Mindanao. No country has fully developed without a viable and reliable railway system. It is the cheapest mode of passenger and back transportation. It also encourages rural productions as affordable transport of countryside products is assumed. Incidentally, Mr. Speaker, honorable colleagues, billions of pesos have been wasted in the failed repeated efforts to rehabilitate the PNR South Line. The carcass of the antiquated vehicle railways is beyond resuscitation. Therefore, a new and modern railroad system must be constructed and developed. Four, deliberation of impoverished individual farmers from the burden of irrigation fees is long overdue. We welcome the resolve of the new administration to free farmers from irrigation rentals in the same manner that pedestrians are not charged with road fees. It would be best to also condone the affected farmers’ rental arrears. Five, we also appreciate the president’s call for the full implementation of the Responsible Parenthood and Reproductive Health Law and its adequate funding support. The enforcement of this historic law must be complemented with the immediate implementation of the mandated reproductive health and sexuality education. Mr. President, now I go to the minorities’ dissent. First, the proposed revival of the death penalty in Administration’s House Bill Number 001 is a retrogression. The abolition of the death penalty in 2005 under Republic Act 9346 was the culmination of a multi-year crusade which I spearheaded. Its proposed imposition is a patent affront to human rights and an abandonment of modern penology’s focus on rehabilitation of the convict, not the exaction of retribution. The revival of capital punishment even for heinous crimes is an anachronism and execution by hanging is inordinately aggravating. The death penalty should not be revived for the following reasons. One, it is not a deterrent to the commission of heinous crimes as validated by worldwide empirical and scientific studies. There are no studies indicating the contrary. The death penalty in varying forms of execution for various crimes has been imposed since the dawn of civilization. But the commission of crimes, including heinous crimes, has persisted, macking the death penalty. The classic example of the death penalty that the death penalty does not deter the commission of crimes is recorded in medieval England, where pickpocketing was punishable by hanging. It is documented that every time a convict is hung, pickpockets had a field day plying their outlawed trade by victimizing the mob witnessing the execution. Two, what deters the commission of crimes are certainty of apprehension, speedy prosecution, and inevitable conviction once warranted. Three, the death penalty is anti-poor because indigent and marginalized litigants could not afford the high cost of caliber and influential lawyers to secure their acquittal. During the campaign for the abolition of the death penalty, it was shown that 73.1% of death row inmates belong to the lowest and lower income classes. And only 0.8% or 7% convicts came from the upper socioeconomic class. Four, human justice is fallible. The Supreme Court has repeatedly ruled that, and I quote, “Courts should be guided by the principle that it would be better to set free 10 men who might probably be, who might be probably guilty of the crime charged than to convict one innocent man for a crime he did not commit.” The execution of the death penalty is irreversible, including on those who may be innocent. Five, rehabilitation, not distribution, is the trust of modern penology. Six, only God can forfeit life. No human authority has the power to kill, even if judicially mandated as a recompense for another lost life. Seven, the death penalty exacerbates the culture of violence and emboldens the most demonstrant in man. According to the UN High Commissioner for Human Rights, Sheid Al Khushyin, and I quote, “On every level, death penalty is wrong.” He further stated that the backsliding on the abolition of the death penalty will disregard the Philippines’ international obligations as a state party to the second optional protocol to the International Covenant on Civil and Political Rights, wherein the Philippines committed to renounce capital punishment forever, unquote. Second, another retrogression is the lowering of the minimum age of criminal responsibility from the present 15 to 9 years of age, as proposed in House Bill 002. Criminal responsibility is a grave burden which is generally limited to adult offenders and those above 18 years old. Since children lack adequate discretion and discernment, they must not be saddled with criminal culpability at a tender age of 9. It is for this salutary reason that under Republic Act Number 9344 of the Juvenile Justice and Welfare Act of 2006, and I quote, “A child 15 years of age or under at the time of the commission of the offense shall be exempt from criminal liability.” It is a gross anti-child measure to impose criminal liability on children starting at a tender age of 9 years. If children at the age of 15 and under are used or recruited by adult offenders or criminal syndicates as couriers, accessories, or accomplices, the solution is not to decrease the age of criminal responsibility. The correct response is to make the use of children 15 years old and under in criminal activities as an ag-- years old and under in criminal activities as an aggravating circumstance which cannot be offset by a mitigating circumstance, and charge parents or guardians with culpable default in the due exercise of parental authority and discipline in the reading of their children. A worldwide survey shows that only four countries, Oman, Belize, Iran for girls, and Ethiopia, have pegged the minimum age of criminal responsibility starting at nine years, even as some countries have lamentably adopted lower ages of criminal responsibility. There are ten other countries with a minimum age of responsibility at fifteen, like the Philippines. They are Iran for boys, Laos, Maldives, Czech Republic, Denmark, Finland, Iceland, Norway, Sweden, and Burundi. But more countries have legislated the threshold age of criminal responsibility at sixteen to eighteen. A great majority of the said countries are signatories to the UN Convention of the Rights of the Child, like the Philippines, which ratified the covenant in 1990. Under the aforementioned UN Convention, state parties are urged to undertake the, and I quote, "establishment of a minimum age below which children shall be presumed not to have the capacity to infringe the penal law." The subsequent United Nations standard rules for the administration of juvenile justice, or the Beijing Rules, provide that beginning of that age of criminal responsibility for juveniles shall not be fixed at too low an age level, bearing in mind the facts of emotional, mental, and intellectual maturity. The Philippines legislated the age of criminal responsibility above fifteen in Republic Act 3344, in compliance with its international commitments under the UN Convention on the Rights of a Child and the Beijing Rules. Lowering the age of culpability to nine years old is a patent backsliding which is inconsistent with our treaty obligations. Anecdotal impressions, not backed up by hard facts or data, on the reported use of children in the commission of crimes cannot justify the lowering of the minimum age of criminal responsibility. Moreover, children's access to internet facilities, which is switched in the first place, is not nationwide and not available across social classes, cannot be used as justification for insinuating criminal culpability of children of tender ages. The Philippine Action for Youth Offenders and Children's Rights Network, both children's rights advocates, jointly state that lowering the age of criminal responsibility from fifteen to nine years undermines the best interest of the child and would not solve the problem of children committing crimes. They also said that lowering the age of criminal responsibility will result in negative consequences for children and the public. It will increase the number of children detained for long periods of time, making them more likely to become hardened offenders, and detention may also increase the likelihood that there will be residibis compromising public security, safety. Third, in our dissent, it appears that the centerpiece agenda of the present administration is to convert the Philippines from a unitary to a federal state. However, the encourage of this proposed federalism is nebulous, and the projected benefits are grossly tentative. The country must not venture on a radical constitutional change without a solid prior study, delving on the pros and cons of federalism in the light of the following unique Philippine setting: A, seven thousand one hundred seven diverse islands; B, mostly financially strapped local government units; C, centuries of experience in a unitary system; and D, a relatively small land area of three hundred square kilometers, much smaller than the federal states of Australia, Brazil, Canada, the United States, Ethiopia, Malaysia, Mexico, Nigeria, Germany, India, Iraq, Pakistan, Somalia, Venezuela, and Russia. Territorially youth countries, seven out of the ten largest countries, are constrained to federalize because of their sheer size. The small size of the Philippines may not justify federalism. We must not be galvanized into flinched approbation of the proposed federal system, which is principally based on moderate statements of superior efficacy and unvalidated benefits. There is also the prior need to sufficiently rebut the following arguments against federalism: One, it would heighten ethnic and regional rivalries destructive of national unity. Resilience among ethnic groups like Tagalog, Cebuanos, Vicolanos, Kapangpangan, Elokanos, Ausug, and Sambongenos would be inflamed. Two, it would exacerbate imbalances in the development of regional states. Studies have shown that only central zone, southern zone, and the national capital region have gross regional products large enough for self-sufficiency. Hence, the greatest drawback of federalism is that most of the regions may sink deeper into poverty due to their inability to survive without subsidies from the central government. Three, it would create overlaps in jurisdictions as to where the responsibilities of the state governments end and where the responsibility of the national government begins. Four, the bureaucracy would balloon because the very nature of federalism necessitates more bureaucrats in both the national and regional levels. This would lead to duplication of functions, inefficiency, and opportunities for corruption. Five, separatists in Mindanao may not be satisfied because they want their own separate state rather than belong to our larger federal Philippines. Six, change to federalism is costly. It would entail billions of pesos to set up state governments and ensure the delivery of state services. Moreover, the states would have to fund mandatory expenditures, like salaries of personnel, development of infrastructure, and even the holding of regular elections. Seven, political and economic dynasties will be further entrenched as they would operate in relatively smaller areas of influence. Although the matter of adapting a federal system is addressed to the Constituent Assembly or a Constitutional Convention, the Congress has to be preliminary, albeit substantial jurisdiction, to debate the merits of the merits of federalism relative to the need and mode of constitutional change. It is Congress which will call for either a Constituent Assembly or a Constitutional Convention, and appropriate funds for the process of constitutional amendment. The starting point is here in Congress, or it may not even leave the starting line. In the sauna, President Duterte declared that, and I quote, "Human rights cannot be used as a shield or an excuse to destroy this country," unquote. I am sure not a single soul in this august chamber desires to destroy the president's country, our country. History documents that human rights have never been used to ruin a country. The historic Universal Declaration of Human Rights was adopted by the United Nations to serve as a potent guidepost of states, to ensure the rule of law, as they then struggled to reconstruct and rise from the ravages of World War II. Later, the human rights-based approach to governance and development was conceptualized and is now being proposed for adoption by the new administration. The universality of human rights prescribes that law enforcers respect and protect the human and constitutional rights, more particularly the absolute right to life of suspected criminal offenders. As we resolve to combat the drug menace and criminality, it is well to remember that the eminent legislator and its town's human rights advocate, Jose W. Docno, said, and I quote, "No cause is more worthy than the cause of human rights. They are what makes a man human. Deny them, and you deny man's humanity," unquote. The late Senator Docno did not, and we should not make any distinction, between law-abiding citizens and those in conflict with the law, with respect to the state's obligation to respect, protect, and fulfill human rights. Mr. Speaker, distinguished colleagues, let us all defend Article 2, Section 11 of the Constitution that mandates the state to value, quote, "the dignity of every human person" and to guarantee, quote, "full respect for human rights," unquote, an injunction that President Duterte and all of us are sworn to uphold. Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we refer the speech of the Honorable Edson Lagman to the appropriate committee.
So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Hearing no objections, the speech of the Honorable Lagman is referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority floor leader.
Move to suspend, Mr. Speaker.
Session is suspended. Session is resumed. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we reconsider Journal Number 1 dated July 25, and on page nineteen thereof amend the same to indicate that Representative Toby Tiangko registered a no vote. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
There is a motion to amend the journal of the previous session. Are there any objections? Hearing none, the motion is carried. Majority floor leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move that we adjourn session until Monday, August 1.
Majority floor leader, could you move for the adoption of the journal as corrected?
Mr. Speaker, I withdraw my previous motion, Mr. Speaker. I move that we adopt the reconsidered Journal Number 1. So moved, as amended. So moved, Mr. Speaker.
Hearing no objections, the motion is carried. Majority floor leader.
Move to suspend, Mr. Speaker.
Session is suspended.